As far as I know, we are not posting these meetings correctly. We're posting them on the bulletin board beside Sid Jane Watson's office. Are they, Christine, are they anywhere else?
You can stay down there, we have to.
Rick, I think you should handle it at large.
They're officially posted in the town hall, in a public place, and they are also available on the town's calendar, on the front page. When you open the Town of Hamilton website, if you look on the day of the week, you click on that day and it lists all the meetings, and then once you enter that, the agenda pops up.
Oh, okay. Where is that?
On right, Town of Hamilton webpage. Right on the right-hand side, you'll see a calendar, and if it said February 18th, and you click on that date, right below it, it lists all the meetings of that date.
That's the point I'm trying to make. I went on the website this week, and the agenda is not on there. The planning board website does not have the agenda on it.
It's not on the planning board page, it's on the town clerk's page.
It's the main page of the town.
Just the main page.
Well, the point I'm trying to make is...
We can add it to the...
The bulletin board is not legal.
Yes, it is. It has to be in a physical place in this building.
No, don't, please, all right? I just studied this, and I don't really appreciate someone telling me that I'm not informed of what I just read of the laws, all right? The bulletin board is supposed to be outside for 24-hour observation by the public, or else it's to be posted in the police department or some other public place so it can be read 24 hours a day. Now, there was, there was an action by the Tom Carnalano and the Historic Commission trying to get Boy Scouts to build a display outside of the town hall for posting of agendas, but it never got built. I don't know where it died, but it died somewhere. The reason to go to Tom Carnalano so that it would be historically correct match of the building. So, the law allows you to, you have to, the bulletin board beside the town clerk's office is correct if there is a 24-hour publication somewhere that the public can read, and that would do it if it's on the, but I don't, can you explain to me why it's not, if someone goes to the planning board for an agenda, why would they go somewhere else?
It's on the, it's on the, when I started working here, Ed, that's the way things were done.
All meetings are posted.
But where's the agenda?
Tom Hamilton, and you click on the 18th, it says Hamilton Planning Board.
You click on the one you want.
And where's the agenda?
If you click on the meeting you want, whether it's Historic Commission, Conservation Commission, it comes up with the agenda, and you click on that, and it's there.
Well, let me leave it this way, will you make sure that it gets, the agenda gets on?
I give it to Jane, and Jane, that's her job, she posts that legally.
It is, when you click on the meeting, the agenda comes up.
Well, it didn't for me this week, so, all right, that's fine.
That's Jane, Jane handles that.
I'm wrong, I want our meetings to be legal, and if it isn't posted, they're not legal, and that means everything we do is a waste of time, so I...
Well, that's not correct, Ed. They are posted as they are required by law, and if you're telling...
What is the law? Tell me the law that I just read, where I'm wrong, Rick, would you please?
Well, Ed, nobody's protesting, there's nobody that said that this is an illegally posted meeting.
No, no, he just wants to...
The town, the town posts all its meetings the way that it is done, so you're telling us that all the town meetings for every department and every planning, and every board is now illegal based on your reading of the law.
Where did I talk about anywhere else except the planning board?
Well, because that's how every board and department posts its public meeting.
You, you want to rewrite the meetings and rewrite history as we go along?
No, well...
I questioned us, this board, being legal in its presentation.
And I'm telling you, and I'm telling you, that the planning board posts its meetings, like the Board of Selectment, the ZBA, the Conservation Commission, that's how, that's how it's done.
But let's, like, listen, yeah, we don't need to be devil's hearers. We understand, we understand, and we've got the two issues resolved, and it's been, it's on for 24 hours, and we just want to make sure that that's...
We don't have to maintain the stocks outside of town hall for the, for the board.
No, no, it does not have to be done that way.
I think we should bring them back, we're all set now.
Besides, we have EEI posting all the...
It's EIE.
EIE, thank you, posting all the meetings.
That's the only way you find out what's going on.
Really?
Okay, so, next agenda. Agenda number one, planning board, planning director position. The board will continue to discuss this from previous meetings about the job description. A recommendation of the town manager and Board of Selectment is anticipated. I would open that up, why are we making a recommendation to the town manager?
Well, because that's what we voted to do.
Let's have Jeff report what he did, because we gave him a task last time, and I thought it was, you know, 60 percent good, I have some differences, but...
Christine, do you have a copy of the question?
Do you want, you want to tell us how you integrated our information?
No, I didn't get them before I left.
Does everybody have, Claudia doesn't have a copy with it, does anybody?
Ed, Ed sent them out today.
I will make a copy if somebody needs a copy. Okay, does somebody have one that I could...
He's got a few.
One, two, that's okay. Two, everybody else is all set, Rick, do you need one?
No.
Okay.
Maybe you could talk while...
Well, it might be helpful if they have it in front of them while I talk.
Yeah, I've read it.
I've read it.
Okay, all right. Obviously, it's, it's a not easy project to look at so many different viewpoints and try to incorporate them into the same document, particularly when they are so different. So, what I try to do is go through this and figure out what are the concerns that people have. In the second paragraph, I took care of...
A little, maybe not specific to, since not everybody does have the paper, just on a general basis at this point, because I think, you start getting to particulars.
Well, why don't I wait then, because I'm concerned.
Well, first of all, did you receive my, because I've never heard that from you, so I didn't know if you ever, I went, I read it, I didn't see anything that I'd said, so I was curious.
I did not respond to anybody individually, because I don't think that I should have, and I wasn't really what I was trying to do.
Yeah, maybe we can let Jeff finish his summaries before we start interrupting him.
Yeah, well, since people have the paper, that's fine.
So, why don't you continue, why don't you continue on how you went through this process?
So, I tried to take care of the first concern, which was whether the position will conflict with our job, with the zoning board of appeals, with the Board of Health, CONCOM, and building inspector, and so forth. And so, I inserted that second paragraph to make it very clear that this position does not conflict with us, and it is basically to provide managerial and creative assistance and support to us. And I did that because I was concerned about, obviously, the statutory law that says who does what. I then tried to break everyone's memos and comments down into areas of concern, and it seemed to me the only way I could sift through it was to make headings as to what the general ideas, as I understood, of this position is to be. And the first one, as I understood, was to coordinate the town planning and enforcement that's not as easily done without this provision. So, I set it up, the director will serve as a liaison, and there, look, I'll tell you right now, I fully expected it to be some very creative, constructive additions to this, so, in no way do I think this is complete. But to coordinate town planning, which was something, Claudia, that I thought you wanted, land use, zoning, conservation, public health, and development-related matters among the different boards and commissions and elected officials of the town, so that the right hand would know what the left hand's doing. Number two, coordinate the enforcement of town bylaws, regulations, and conditions required by permits, another thing that we've complained was not necessarily being done. The next came from Michael's, which is coordinate affordable housing programs and policies. Apparently, this is a position that is not simply going to serve the planning board, but he wants, and I guess the Selectmen want, this person to do other things as well, and those are three, four, and five, okay? Six, I think would probably be a support for this board, because we do subdivisions and so forth. And then seven would be for us too, which is coordinating the preparation and planning land use and the public grant applications and so forth. Michael had wanted this person to also represent the town and town manager on various boards, such as the Metropolitan Area Planning Council and so forth. I left it in, that doesn't, that doesn't offend me that the person would do that. And then also provide staff support and serve as liaison to various town committees, such as the school reuse and study commissions, it would seem to make sense that that would be something that this person would do, because that's a planning thing. And if we have, like, for example, one of our schools that may be coming up on lease, maybe that makes sense to have that person be a liaison and be able to report back to us in a planning capacity. And then Michael had put in, serve as the town's principal technically liaison to the Hamilton Development Corporation. I don't know what he means by technically liaison, but I thought that these guys brought themselves together. Then paragraph, the second part is assistance in town planning. This is a person that could help us and do some town planning, but I was concerned again about them really working for us, so I put in, at the request of the planning board, zoning board of appeals and/or the town manager, the director will do these things. Now, I wondered whether I should keep the town manager in there, but it doesn't seem to me it'd be a problem if the town manager asked this person to help with town planning. The decisions are made by this board, but this person could do other things that the town manager feels might help us, that we may not be aware of. So, undertake projects and conduct special studies, participate in updating comprehensive building planning documents, provide recommendations on the drafting and revising of town bylaws. We want them to do that, we could use that help. And additionally, research, write, and present planning documents, lead to a variety of issues, okay? So, I thought those are the kinds of things that they could do to help us. And then supporting, the director would attend our meetings, I think it's important, because if this position is going to subsume Christine's, we need that person here. And the question of what other boards they should attend, I thought they should be at the ZBA as well, and so forth. Attending Health Department, CONCOM, you know, I think if they wanted them, great, and if they didn't want the person, then that would be fine as well. Review and verify applications for subdivisions, so forth, that's something I think Christine helps us do and coordinate with people, that would be something we'd want them to do. And participate in budget preparation for us, I don't know if any other board would want that as well or not.
May I interrupt you for just one second?
Sure.
You moved from helping the board do its various functions to now being the staff of the board?
Well, in the, in the sense that I look at Christine as someone who helps us, maybe you want to call her staff, it's just...
Absolutely, but that's where, I guess, I don't like the idea that the budget line that we have for our planning coordinator is doubled and becomes the town planner, and then they have all these other functions, and what I fear is that none of the applications coming before the board will ever be reviewed carefully, because we have no direct staff that reports to the chairman of the board or to the various members of the board.
Let me finish going through this, and then we get, I think.
All right, but that's why I'm pointing that out.
Peter, I happen to agree with you, and Ed made the same comment at the last meeting, and I've been over-inclusive in terms of repairing this thing, because it's easier to cut things out, I think, sometimes, than under-inclusive. I share your concern, I share Ed's concern regarding maybe cuts. I don't know exactly how this new person is going to continue to serve us and do all these other things, which is one of the reasons I kept in a lot of Michael's things, so we could talk about that. That's a concern, I do share. All right, and four, assistance with town decisions, you know, Christine makes some recommendations here and there, and it would be helpful if this person's doing all that work to make recommendations for us, as we ask. And then we had talked about enforcement issues, so that's number five, ensuring that the decisions of our board and the ZBA and Board of Health and so forth are implemented and enforced. Again, Peter, that comes down to, it sounds like a lot of work if anyone do the BOH and CONCOM and so forth, and I don't know if that's something that's good for us.
I know.
And obtain legal documents and so forth. These are things that I think that we need to talk about, and I think in conjunction with Mark and Michael again, to see how they intend that this person would do a lot, do all the work. But what I want to try to do is break this down into the types of tasks that they were doing, and then really kind of show the enormous amount of work that's being suggested, and then try to figure out how is this going to work, and what things can they do, and what things they cannot do. And then, obviously, report to the town, again, annual report, that's not, these are not necessarily things, as I said, that I think they ought to be doing or can do. Developing an annual report could be an enormous amount of work, I don't know what that means. And the miscellaneous are pretty simple, but what I try to do is organize this in a way that you could see the types of work that they're going to be doing, and the amount of work that each would entail, particularly as you list down to the various boards and committees and so forth that they would be doing the work for. That's how I went about it. And as I said, I do share your concern as to whether one person could do all these things and serve all these masters or not. I know that Rick, I thought, had a very good paper, and it was quite a bit narrower than this, I think. Rob had it, everybody had a different approach, there's no way, physically impossible, to dovetail what everybody said into one document, and everyone say, "Oh, that's great, I think this is, you know, a point for talking points, the things to add is the track." That's, so that's why I did it.
So, tremendous job.
Yeah, thank you. That's, it's not easy to do with seven, six, and seven people, including your opinions.
Where we can't see what each other's saying, so we can't correct each other or revise it.
Which is, which is actually good, because otherwise we'd have seven times seven reviewing, you know, we'd have 49 viewpoints going on here.
Yep.
So, that's why I think Jeff, my recommendation is, we certainly can talk about this, I'd like to shift it back to them and say, "Okay, you know, we've enunciated, when we get, when we're happy with it, all the tasks that we see that are incumbent on this individual, tell us how this is going to work, how are you going to staff it, and how are you going to manage it?"
Why are we necessarily going to the town manager when this is, the planning director is in our budget? And it seems to me that we should have some say in terms of who's hired, I mean, it's not necessarily a purely administrative function.
Well, the question is, is it in our budget, or is that a placeholder for this new position, which is going to report to the town manager, and really, we're going to lose our staffing and support function?
Why does it have to report to the, I mean, I, I...
Well, I think it's just by accident it's there.
I think you certainly have to coordinate with the town manager, I'm not saying that, I think you have to, actually, be inclusive in, but, but basically, this is a land use director.
I understand what you're saying, what I, I don't, I don't think, I think it's just an accident that they departed from the existing budget where we had a planning coordinator, they made it an $80,000 a job, a year job, and then they said, "And that person's going to actually go to a different side of the, of the town hall and serve a different group, and we won't have any support."
Well, I don't think it's an accident. I mean, this is a, it seems to me, is the town manager...
It could be settled if we just told him, "Put the position where you think it should be, but, and then you'll see you've taken away."
I agree.
I mean, Christine goes away.
Yeah, but then the damage is done, Peter, that's, that, in other words, we, Christine came up to speed quite quickly for us, went after Marcy left, and has institutional knowledge, and when you read her job description, it's pretty comprehensive for three days a week. So, to move forward with this other position and let, leave us hanging at a critical time when we're really rethinking long-term planning in a, in a, in a macro way...
Well, it's wrong, obviously.
It's just not appropriate. And, and Ed has said outright, he cannot do the job, he's already here five days a week in the town hall dealing with this, without her support. And this job description, as even as Jeff has reworded it, doesn't really satisfy the position of that person sitting there. And somehow, if, if Michael said at the meeting, "Oh, well, we'll just get somebody to take minutes," and that's just not the issue, it's she does much more than that for us. So, I would be hesitant to hand it back to Michael and say, "Okay, here's this, here it is," when in fact, we should be hiring the person. And it, and it is in, I, it is in the state statute that we have the right to employ people.
And is our line item budget?
But then you're leaving out what was the movement to a more modern kind of government. The all-boards meeting of three or four years ago came to the conclusion that we need to have a planning director that integrates the things that, you know, the policies of the Conservation Commission, and the Open Space Committee, and the Public Health Boards and so forth. So, I support that, but I don't necessarily, at least in my paper, I suggested maybe we should divide the budget in half, leave the planning coordinator here, and then have a half-time planning director, and then if the town wants to add more money than for a full-time planning director to coordinate all the board, land use boards, fine, but don't take away our administrative support.
It seems to me we're always trying to find out what gives other boards are doing, and yet, we're supposed to be elected officials here who are doing planning, and for us not to have firsthand knowledge about what's going on with all these land use boards is ludicrous. I mean, we need to have some position here in terms of...
So, you don't want a planning director?
I do, I want a planning director that reports to the planning board.
Well, that's not the way it's going to work.
I think it's two different jobs, I think you were right, it's two different jobs.
Yeah, it is two different jobs.
What, what Michael wants is, is at the administrative level, macro, town, planning, integration of boards. What we want is day-to-day help in planning, right on the ground, root stuff. And you, I thought you articulated it quite well, so it is really two different jobs.
I think so.
So, I think then the response is, we can say we think it's two different jobs, one is the planning director that coordinates all the town land use and associated boards, and there needs to be some staffing, direct staffing for the planning board.
Which is called a planning coordinator.
Right, so, we can certainly, you know, articulate that point, and then have, I'd like a response back to clarify how that's going to happen, you know, what's the, so I think, you know, we're still, we're figuring out what we need, and what a planning director's going to do, and how the resources are going to fall out. I mean, Michael articulated that he thought there were sufficient existing resources to reallocate time and focus, but that's not clear how that's going to happen and how that's going to fall out. So, I think some more time and explanation is needed, so we understand what's going to happen.
For the board's information, the suggestion of two people filling the job was made by Selectman Hubbard, who happens to be here tonight, and by myself independently at the Selectments meeting, suggested that it sounded like a two-person job. Mr. Hubbard, I would recognize you if you wanted to say anything on that issue.
Thank you, Ed, no, my understanding, it sounds like you are, I don't want to say on the same page, that we're looking for two people with two different talent kind of backgrounds, and it seems to me where with the planning board, we have this person here in this budget, and then we have the HDC who may be able to fund the other part of that person that we're talking about in terms of, well, we're talking about two things, we're talking about administrative, you know, Michael says he needs help managing the different departments, okay?
Right.
That's one job, all right?
Right.
Your board needs a person that is completely separate from that.
Right, right.
But then there's a person we talk about, who I think is in this job description somewhat, who is going to help market take us to the next level, market move forward Hamilton, and that's more of an HDC role, and could be funded potentially through the meals tax, through the HDC, so, yeah, I mean, I concur that.
Right, but we're, we're actually talking about leaving the HDC out of this for the moment, is that the town needs a planning director to coordinate all land use boards and associated, and the planning board, so I'd say it's probably one and a half positions, a full-time planning director and at least a, as uncomfortable as this is for Christine, a Christine, at least, you know, three days a week, who's focused directly on the activities that the planning board, because we really do need to have that communication and coordination, so, and we're going to have more things coming up, like Canterbury Brook and the patent property and more activities.
I'd like to add at least one, my vision of why there's a different kind of need, landowners elect the planning board, they're the taxpayers in town, in a sense, that's who we represent, is the, the general land use policy of the town. And it's not directed by the town government as such, there's an autonomy to making, passing bylaws, you have to get a big majority in the town meeting and all the rest of it. So, when a landowner wants to divide their land, change its use, they go through a process of complying with bylaws that have been approved by town meeting, and then an application comes in, and we have to go through that very carefully, and they get a special permit, or they get a subdivision approval, a definitive subdivision set of conditions, and so forth. And that's the business of the planning board. We also have a master planning function, but that's a secondary thing, it happens every few years. Whereas the planning director is part of a staff for the town manager and the Selectmen, who are to promote the tax base of the town, to bring new economic sources of revenue into the town, and to do projects, promote projects, and move the town forward in, in a way that is politically acceptable to, and they report really to the Selectmen, not to the planning board. And I think that there's that top-down approach, and there's the bottom-up of land use, which they don't necessarily have to conflict, and that's where the coordination will take place. But it's no accident that we're an elected board.
But Peter, that visionary person you were just describing, isn't that what our HDC is doing? I know they're defined, they're, right now, they're defined more towards our downtown.
That's where it is, yes.
But just for that, but it seems to me we've got a lot of cooks in the kitchen here, and you all are the planning board, we're all looking, like you said, we all, as taxpayers, are looking to you all for the planning of our town, not the Selectmen, and not anybody who reports to the town manager who reports to the Selectmen, we're looking to you.
Well...
To, in your words, right? I mean, isn't that what you just said?
That's very flattering, but there are, there are other, you know, the Conservation Commission, the ZBA, and other boards...
Those people should be cooperating with you.
They should be, but that's the challenge that we're trying to address here, because they don't, not because they're bad people, it's because they have different areas of responsibility, and they're, over the years, have been overlapped, and there's been jealousy about who has what responsibility, and, because there's not clearly defined roles. So, a planning director would be the management tool that actually gets the boards communicating, so when we have a patent property or Canterbury Brook or whatever, is that everybody's marching down the same path, so a developer, or a citizen, or a landowner doesn't have to go around in circles trying to figure out what's going on between the various boards. So, there's definitely a manage, centralized management function that's needed to get all of those, all of us talking, acting, and behaving as we should, and reducing the wasted motion that we all go through.
Is that $80,000 worth for the amount of activity we're talking about, and given we do have other resources, and...
Yeah, actually, it will be, because we're, we're looking at an economy that's picking up, we've got a major development, Canterbury Brook coming in front of us, we've got the patent property, which is going to be going through a development process, the HDC, which is a separate entity, is going to be generating its own plan and its own activities, which is going to include, you know, we're going to look at rezoning the downtown, we're going to be looking at searing, some sort of wastewater treatment for the downtown, we're going to be looking at connectivity and changes to...
So, this person will start to include you guys, then?
To, well, I mean, yes, we obviously...
Don't you think a lot of those things are planning functions?
What?
The, the, the coordinator of all these efforts, they should be coming to the planning board, and...
Who?
This planning coordinator.
Yes, of course, I'm talking about a planning director who is obviously serving all the boards, he's making sure that everybody's working in concert, that all the enforcement actions are done properly. So, what I'm saying is, you have one role... So what I'm saying is you have one role as a management, top-level manager. And then I'm thinking, what I'm hearing is we need a least half-time person who's focusing exclusively on planning board zoning rules, regulations, enforcement, just as we do-
Claudia's got something to say.
Just as we do now.
I just, I think we all agree-
Right.
That it's two jobs, so we can move on from that. The question is, how do we move on? And my other question is, we're three days a week. Do you feel if we were to hire a planning coordinator as base, Michael sent me your job when they posted your position. He sent me the description of what you, your responsibilities. I don't know if you want to read it, it may be a little late, but my question is-
I don't know if I've seen you something.
Do you think that the job is doable at three days? You know what we're talking about. We're all pretty much in concert here. Do you think the job can be done? I mean, this is not a town of 60,000 people here.
No, it's not.
And it's not like we have seven developments every month. It's two or three houses and maybe one or two subdivisions. It's not a ginormous task. So can you do the job three days a week?
What I will tell you, and, and for the people in the audience as well, I mean, this is a difficult spot to be in.
Yeah, yeah.
No pressure, no pressure.
However, when I, when I took this job, it was a part-time position, not to exceed 25 hours a week. And over last summer, because I have two kids that I take care of, I was here about 20, 22 hours a week. And, you know, it wasn't quite enough to get done, but it needed to get done in 20 hours a week. And I asked Michael in the fall, I said, listen, I, I need more time. And I don't know if 25 hours is enough. And he said, let's see about stopping at 30 hours a week. So I've been kind of since September putting in more towards 30 hours a week. And I'm still busy and I'm not always catching up on what I need to do. Things are getting busier. You do have some site plans coming in. The patent pool expansion, Cumberland Farms, Canterbury Brook. There's two other developers that have been interested. So your regulatory work is growing. We're also, as, as Rick mentioned, we're looking at supporting some downtown, some zoning changes so that your town and your community can grow. You've been very busy for two years.
But you did, you did, just so we're clear, you did work for the HDC as well, didn't you?
Yes, since I've been here, I asked-
You also oversaw the grant and the, and the MAPC. You did, so you had other tasks. It wasn't exclusively planning board.
The three areas that I work on, I, I support your planning board right now. And when I, I had given Michael kind of an estimate of, of the tasks I do and my workload. And, you know, the planning board is, you know, my, my number one priority. If I have something to do, I've got to do that first. Then we started reinvigorating your Economic Development Committee and the HDC bloomed and we got staffing and we got it going. So that takes up a good chunk of my time. And then I also support the Affordable Housing Trust. So it's housing, economic development, and the planning board. Those are my primary pieces of my job. There are a lot of little other things that come along.
But I mean, do you, I guess, and it's not the authoritarian in me, Rick. Do you think you answer to the planning board first? I mean, I know Michael pays your check, but you really do, we're hired to work for this board, right? Is that, am I, am I correct or is that, is that squishy?
To be honest, I, I consider that I walk in the door and he's the boss in the building and I work for him. And I do the work of the planning board. So I staff your board and you, you people choose what direction you want with your master plan, your zoning. And it's your vision that I then sit and research and work on. When the cell towers came up in the community and the selectmen and, and Michael, I said, what are we going to do? Well, I, I've been, I've been phoning, you know, every couple of weeks, Deb and I, I work with the building, the building administrator. We're still working on it. We're trying to get a tower in this town. It's not really a planning board. You guys didn't ask me to do that, but it's, it's a piece of what we do here. So that's just, you know, I take on the jobs that you ask, but then there's little ones that come in as well.
I'd like to point out that the planning coordinator's position has always been job description created by the planning board, all the, all the interviewing and so forth. This was the first time where Michael said, no, I'm going to do it. He took some of our suggestions as to what the description of the job would be, but he hired her. And he wanted her to report to him. And that, and Marcy left because she couldn't handle that. She was torn into two directions.
That's not, that's not accurate.
Well, I'm sorry.
Well, that's a matter, that's immaterial.
Yeah. So why don't-
Can I, can I ask a question of you, Christine? Can you, do you believe you can successfully work for two bosses?
Well, I've been doing it for two years.
Oh.
But, but you know, but you know, you, you-
My hair's a little gray, right?
Now you stutter, so I just, and I need glasses, and you need glasses. That's not a good self. But I mean, would you be, I guess the question also, would you be in the running or do you have to get fired to apply for the job? I'm, I'm very-
Well, no, see, now that's, and that's where the difficult, the fine line of this job description. It, it, you know, when, when Michael printed it and he said, do I have comments? And I thought, well, if I have comments and he gets angry with my comments, does, how does that go?
How does that go?
So I just sort of sat on it, you know, I, I didn't answer. And I, and again, you guys have to, you know, this is your community, this is your town, this is a new form of government. I was sharing with Brian the fact that the town manager, that the act that you people voted on, it gives him the authority to hire department heads. It gives him the authority to hire staff. When it involves a board or commission, he is to consult with the board or commission, but he has authorities. And so it is a fine line. And, and so I wasn't going to delve into these details until you guys had your discussion.
But by state statute, we have the right to hire. It's, it's statutory, we have the right to hire somebody.
Is that a question or a statement?
No, I'm telling you, that's a declarative statement, so we have the right to hire somebody.
I have a question. I have a question, I think, Stan.
It is.
Jeff's here.
Can, can, rather than going down that road-
Let, I, I recognize Jeff to speak. Let him speak.
Excuse me.
Are you supporting me on that?
Yeah, absolutely. Jeff, I'm, I'm surprised to hear there's apparently a lot of agreement. This is two positions. I, I've heard it from Jeff and I've heard, but last time we were here, Mark and Michael said it was one position. Hers would be eliminated and she could apply for it. So I'm, I'm wondering what has happened. I mean, I, I spent a lot of time doing this for one position. Is it two positions now?
Well, I think, I think we're at that conclusion that what you just showed us. You even said, as you were doing, it's too much. We are having the discussion that what it looks like to us now is that in fact it is two positions.
Okay, but my, I guess my question, Jeff, is, is this something that is your position? Or has there been a sea change with the selectmen and Michael or?
No.
No, I, I represent myself here. My, this is my position.
Brian, you had something to say, and then Rick, you can say what you want.
Well, no, I was just in agreement about the, that it ended up kind of being two positions, I think. Once you, even, even when I first saw this thing, it seemed like an awful lot for one person, 40 whatever hours a week. You know, just, just, you know, going through, you are, you already spend 20, 25 on planning board stuff anyway, roughly. And then this person gets all these other responsibilities in the last 15 hours. I just don't see that happening.
And they can't attend all the board meetings because there'll be so many days of the week of wasted right there.
And I don't think they have to. I think it's really ours and zoning, zoning board probably, there really don't ones I need to attend, but.
Can I make a suggestion?
Rick, you are next.
Well, why don't we communicate to the, to Michael and Mark that based on a review of the job descriptions, roles and responsibilities, we're seeing this as a one and a half, at least one and a half positions. A director, full-time director, and at least a 30-hour-a-week coordinating coordinator. And that we'd like Michael to come back or Mark and/or both and respond to that view and draw for us how they see the current resources being reallocated to meet that need. Because I think we have a document. I'd like them to come back and say, okay, you're right, there really are one and a half positions here. Let me describe, you know, what the direct, this new position as a director will do and let me tell you how I'm going to staff the planning board from existing resources or not. Because I think he's got to come back and, you know, we can keep tweaking this, but he's got to come back with that basis.
Are you saying, what if he comes back and says no?
Yeah, well, then-
Like he's the headmaster, says no, and you go, oh, okay.
That's fine. I want him, I, I want him to come back with a reaction, whether it's no, you're right, or I need to rethink this. I can't predict what he's going to come back. If he says no, then we'll deal with it. It's not, this is not like going to stop and we're all going to, you know, like, oh, God, we're out of business, we can't work. This is a negotiated process while both sides are figuring out where we're going.
Rick, I support you very much, but I would like to word, change three or four phrases in the draft that Jeff has given us. I don't see anything really wrong with it, except there are two or three places where Jeff was under the impression that the planning director would support the planning board. So we ought to correct that and then make it possible for him to understand how there can be a director of planning and not overlap with the planning coordinator's job supporting the planning board.
I, well, I, if, are we going to go through this point by point then? Are we going to submit this?
Well, not tonight because there won't be enough time. We've got 14 other things.
So how do we, how do we move forward on it? Because I have some issues on it.
I just suggested a way to do that, that we write a letter, we say to the-
I understand that. I heard you. What I'm talking about is what Jeff has written.
We send it to him.
I would rather not send it. What he has written, I don't necessarily agree with all of it. He even willingly said it needs some editing from us. So I would hate to send it forward as it is currently configured. That's my point.
I've got my notes on his paper that I can give to Jeff. He'll accept mine. But he needs to bring something back to the board for consensus or send it around.
Should we do another revision? Is that the thinking?
Or should we take a stab at splitting it up?
I'd like to keep it centralized.
No, I, no, I meant splitting it into two positions.
Oh.
Yeah, that's-
Well, actually, I sent Jeff two different job descriptions. One is a senior management position and one is a staff planner. But you could use that as a template if you wanted to.
I think, I think, yeah, wouldn't we need this, when do they, when do you guys need this back?
I don't think so.
It's a day in progress for you.
So we, we, my suggestion would be-
He, the only thing I recall is that he seemed under the impression that he was wanting to put the position out there and be hiring by, I don't know, the town meeting is hovering in everyone's, their heads about something.
I, I wouldn't worry about it because we've got to get it right. And we've been waiting two years to get this to this point. So it's, no, it doesn't make sense to rush it without getting it right.
What bothers me about this is there's a second line in the description of, of our agenda tonight is a recommendation to the town manager and the board of selectmen. That suggests that the town manager is setting policy and that is against his, his, his job description. It's very specific that he cannot set policy, so I can't see how you can, you can send anything to him. It goes to the selectmen, and the selectmen are charged with, with developing policy. And the town manager is charged with taking that policy and administering it.
What about just doing one position that is just planning in terms of what we need? And if, you know, I don't want to dictate to him what he needs, let him decide what, what is necessary for his needs. And we just focus on, on what our needs are.
This has been, this has been-
Isn't that what you did, Rick?
Smooth, so that there's a lot of coordination function in here.
What's that?
This has been smooth by Jeff, so that a lot of what Michael would like to have in the form of coordination-
I know, I know.
And that Rick says he sort of did a job description for, but I, I've got a revision of Jeff's memo that is good for a planning director. And then the other job, the staff position for the planning board remains.
Can I make a suggestion? And that is that, I tried, as I said, to keep more in and take it out. Because I thought it's easier to take out any discussions, put back in. What if we all, this is just one positive way, go home over the next two weeks, look this over and put a yellow highlight through stuff that would go for our person and a blue highlight through stuff that would go for the other position. And then come back and talk about which functions. I try to be inclusive about the functions. And if there are other things you want, write those in, highlight and blur.
Okay, and then-
Sounds like a program.
Okay.
Yellow for whom? Doesn't matter.
Well, it's all doing the same.
Paying for it.
Say, say what you want, Jeff. Yellow for-
Yellow for planning board.
Go ahead for the others.
Blue for the high level.
This is hard enough subject. We ought to take this a vote, take a vote on doing it this way.
If someone would like to make a motion. Jeff, make a motion.
Move that we go back, take a look at these, at this draft and come back at the next meeting and indicate which positions are for the planning board and which positions and duties would be for the other position.
And what colors are you?
I, I don't care what colors, as long as people can keep getting back on the board.
Be consistent.
Yellow for the planning board. We're up for the second and is there some discussion now, more discussion from the board?
Thank you, Jeff, for doing that.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
Is my policy to recognize anybody in the audience that wants to speak to the subject?
Well, just add, because you're constitutional, you, you like going by Robert's Rules of Order, so I hope you know-
No, we haven't adopted Robert's Rules of Order.
No, I know, but you like to go by rules.
I'm adopting what the town council advised me was the appropriate thing to do.
Well, let me advise you-
And I sent a copy of it to you and I hope you read it.
Well, just for the record, Ed, when there's a motion on the table and a motion has been seconded, then the board needs to act.
We just, didn't we just have a-
You can't have those coming on.
You can't then reopen it. You're now, you have closed all discussion. A motion has been made, it's been seconded, now we need to vote.
Can we make a motion then in between and say, we would, I would like to make a motion that we have some discussion with the public before we actually vote?
I'm not going to split hairs. I'd just like to put this to bed so we can move on to, on more, more-
It sounds like you were splitting hairs because you're saying that this is technically how it's supposed to happen. So that's, that's a technical, splitting hairs.
We made a, we made an executive-
We haven't heard, we haven't heard from the public. And I would like, as one person here, anybody, like to hear-
Then you should have asked earlier.
Right.
Well, I didn't realize, I didn't realize the procedures. And so I made a mistake and I'd like to try to correct that mistake before we vote. Before we vote, I would like to make that, correct that mistake.
Well, then you're being out of order.
Out of order.
All right.
So can we just vote on the motion? This is very simple.
All who is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No, take your public comment.
That's a thinking.
Okay, so now we can have a public comment?
If, if Deb wants it, it's at his meeting.
Yes. I'm Janet Aldrich from Hamilton here. I, I was discussing this with some friend of mine and he said, he didn't know what the town charter said about the town manager position, because that's the test that seems to be happening. I don't know if this is really contributing the right information here, but I, I wondered, you know, you're a lawyer, correct?
I can read to you the, the act, the Town Manager's Act, if you would like.
I don't really want it read. I just was trying to bring it forward that it's the town. The town charter can give the town manager more, more responsibility than people think. So there's been, you know, there's a case where, in Woben, where they, the town manager went, went in, in, into contest with the, with one of the boards. And he, and he wanted to come in and sit, it was on the planning, he came in and sit, sat and took over the meeting. And he, he was allowed to do that, that week. So I just think you need to review your charter and really get the tight answer on this and not, you know, so you're ready for another issue that will come up and, and stop this pressure and tension that's happening right now.
No, there's, there's always tension. That, that is how government works.
Okay.
I mean, if you look at most people in this room, they have exerted pressure and tension to get something done in this town. That's the way it works. There's always the conflict of where the authority lies, the responsibility, and how that gets worked out. So I'm not worried about the town manager coming in and taking over because there'll be one hell of a bruhaha before that happens. So, but can we move on?
Yes, and like I said, if the rest of the board, the charter, chapter 114, which explains the town manager's role in all of this, this is something your town voted on and adopted. This is what-
Could you possibly make a copy of that for her?
I think she probably already has it. She was reminding you that it exists.
Yeah.
But I'd be happy to.
You're a member of the League of Women Voters, right?
Yeah, right. But that doesn't mean I had a copy of it.
I stand corrected on the order of things by Rick Mitchell, so- I stand corrected on the order of things by Rick Mitchell. So now it's appropriate if anybody in the audience would like to say something on this subject.
This, what covers other things is just the appropriate time.
Could you speak on this subject?
No, we were talking about the position, planning position.
Yes, I understand. I have something to say about that, but I also have something to say about a couple of other things.
Well, if you stray too far, we're trying to hold it back.
Can you keep it to one topic so we can move on to the next?
But it's all integrated.
All right, we'll do what you can.
The way I wanna present it. It really is.
Okay, do you wanna wait then?
Whenever it suits you. My chart is bold. It isn't gonna be pretty, but it's- It never is. The other one talks about pressure.
Okay. All right, let's move on for now.
All right, second item on the agenda. Groundwater protection overlay district. I've requested for a long time that we spend some time discussing what's commonly known as GPOD and its relationship to the town and particularly the large mass area that is represented by the GPOD districts. And our obligation to landowners, developers and what have you that might be wanting to do something in those districts. And I will, this is not a discussion in any way connected to, connected to Canterbury. Canterbury happens to be in a GPO district as near as I know. But that's not the subject of the discussion of GPOD. The subject of GPOD is my understanding of it. Was developed by what is basically an environmental impact statement set to law, voted on by the town, town meeting, and established the bylaws that are registered. Printed in this book. If you go to the, if you go to the town clerk, you can buy one of those. And you can also buy a map which shows where the GPOD lands areas are. Only thing is, she happens to be out of at the moment, but I happen to have one. And what I'd like to remind everyone concerned is that the bylaws of the town are not up for interpretation. They are the laws of the town that we have to abide by. With that being said, the bylaws are listed in the book. And that is the most up-to-date map dated 2009. The original groundwater protection overlay district was established in 1985. Zone two areas, which is in yellow, was adopted by amendment in the May of 2000. Zone three area, which represents the wellhead protection area, was adopted in 2004. If you look at this, the colored areas, the striped areas represent, I would guess, I, something above one-third of the land area in the town. And the regulations, the bylaws, don't intend to go over them, but they're quite specific as what can be done and what can't be done. The idea of it is a, is a, as an environmental impact statement. The town meeting went along with it on three different occasions. This is the way it, it, it was. They determined that they wanted to protect the quality and the quantity of our water supply. And our town council has created a situation, she says that there is, there is, when there is a conflict with other districts, that there should be harmonizing take place. Mr. Hamilton has appeared before this board as a, as a lawyer, an employee of, of some different neighborhood groups. And he says this is, this is all well and good, except for the fact that there is no conflict. In section 12 of the bylaws of the, of the over 55 housing. So if there's no conflict, where are we?
The conflict right now, as far as I'm concerned, is that-
Ed, I, I think, do you know, attorneys do something called arguing in the alternative. And we frequently have fallback positions. I think I have at least three arguments concerning why GPOD might affect a particular project in the area. And Tim Majowski might have an additional one, or two, or three. And I'm sure Jeff knows what I'm talking about. That the two bylaws are not in conflict is one of my arguments. I consider it a viable and valid argument, but there are others. And the primary one is just that a, a, an environmental, environmentally protective bylaw is not intended to be thwarted by, by a bylaw that promotes economic development.
Can I, can I stop right here?
But those are, those are separate arguments.
Can we take a timeout here? I don't know where we're going. We started out with a discussion presenting, talking about GPOD. And then all of a sudden it became John Hamilton, no disrespect to you, John, opining on what his view of GPOD is. What are we doing as a board with this topic?
That's, I, I agree with, to me, that's inappropriate. No, I, I think we need to, for, to begin with, just have a board discussion.
About what, though?
About the GPOD.
Can we focus in on what that-
Yeah, Rick, I'm sorry I chimed in. I just felt I was not-
No disrespect, John.
I was not intentionally misquoted. It's just, it's rather an esoteric thought.
Right, right. He did mention her name and I think it was for some rationale.
It just sort of went, shoo. I'm trying to figure out what we're doing with this subject.
There's a staff memo that's been prepared for us to review.
No disrespect. I'm just trying to have the board tell-
I just wanna put up, I'm one of the wise ones that no longer tries to exert influence.
Rick, why don't, why don't we start with the staff memo? She put together a memo that quoted from a lot of different sources, including the Black, Blackrock study that we did last summer.
Understood. I'm just, I'd like to, you know, I'd like to know where Ed, or anybody else on the board would like to go with this discussion, so-
I'm trying to, I'm trying to make our responsibility, and I said this in the opening statement. I, we have a responsibility to the landowners that are in the GPOD area so that they know what they can do with their property.
Okay.
And that, and I also, and I also said this does not have anything specifically to do with Canterbury.
Okay.
This is about the land area in the town stretching from the Essex-Manchester lines. I brought the plan so you could look at it. This, it's a, it's a, it mounts to a large land area of the town.
Understood.
And, and our job is to, is to, let's see what our job is. Groundwater protection overlay district. The purpose of the groundwater protection overlay district, our to promote, promote the health, safety and general welfare of the town by ensuring an adequate quality and quantity of drinking water for the residents, institutions and businesses of Hamilton. That's, that's why we're here.
Understood. So I, I'm trying to just understand, what is there a specific issue or concern that we can focus on to have a meaningful discussion?
Where there is a conflict between the GPOD and some other bylaw, the question is, this idea of harmonizing, is that in fact what needs to take place? That's what our council was saying to us. However, is there a fail-safe that, that takes place? In other words, if you're talking about black acres and, and black acres has, is in the GPOD and yet has a-
Waste water treatment plant.
Waste water treatment plant or, or, or some other element of senior housing or, or something else that other bylaws seem to be contradicting, what, what, what do we do?
Well, you know, maybe I've been on, you know, around this arguments a long time. But we had this discussion in 2012.
Right.
At a great length. It, it took up months of our time. And we sought the opinion of town council.
Right.
And we discussed that ad nauseam. And I thought we had come to a conclusion that as long as a underlying use in the GPOD did not violate the specific prohibitions within the GPOD, then it would be fine to proceed because as the town council recommended, we wanna harmonize the protection of the groundwater district with other potential uses in town. So I'm kind of wondering, has something new come up that suddenly opens this question back up again?
There, my, one of the things that's been uncomfortable for me is I felt that there was a divergence in some of the town's opinions. That in one case she was saying that GPOD was, was the overall umbrella that we have to abide by. And the other-
Can you quote what you were talking about?
I don't have the particular-
I have it, I have it.
All right, let's, let's get to the specifics.
Specific, because I don't wanna be wandering around.
We've gotta be careful not to go into a particular area that's-
No, but it sounds like you've got a specific concern. I'd like to hear what it is so we can have a meaningful-
I, I think what confuses me is two weeks ago, we approved a, I guess you'd call it a subdivision of land on Asbury Street.
Which is in the well-
And we did it without any, without any conflict. The engineer that laid it out, references that residents our zoning district are one in groundwater protection overlay district. Thus, the lots are 80,000 square feet. And we created three lots. We did it and we, we, the board adhered to the groundwater overlay protection district bylaws.
Good. Right. So?
That's right.
So I'm still, I'm still waiting to hear where there's the disharmony.
Right.
Like you said, there's-
There was an umbrella of-
There was a case that you mentioned.
Right.
Can you cite anything?
Well, let's, let's take one that's coming up.
What, what one would that be?
Is the development of the anaerobic digester.
The difficulty I'm running into is I don't know that we wanna prejudge some of these things.
Okay. So let's keep it not specific to the anaerobic digester or Canterbury. But if you can focus in on, is, you know, you mentioned something that was-
There was a divergence that I felt from the attorney, from our attorney.
Can you cite that?
I'm gonna cite it. Let me just cite it. I can cite it right now.
I'm having difficulty.
Good.
Without referencing the application.
Okay.
That, you have an application. It's in the GPOD. It's underlining zoning is R1B. The senior housing bylaw based density is R1B is two units per acre. GPOD requires that a buildable lot have a minimum of 80,000 square feet. So the question is, does the density of GPOD apply or is it, or is it entitled to the R1B based density irrespective of the application of GPOD? Question asked of our attorney. The answer, in my opinion, the density requirements of the GPOD apply. The purpose of the GPOD is to protect the town's drinking water supply. Matters of public health and safety are entitled to the highest construction under the law. The GPOD bylaw is superimposed over all other districts and applies to all new construction and uses. Zoning bylaw, section B D2. In general, land subject to N, to an overlay zoning district has two sets of zoning requirements it must satisfy. That of the underlying district and that of the overlay.
Okay.
So that seems very clear.
So where's the disharmony?
Well, what does that say?
It says-
It says you must satisfy both.
It says it is.
That's what, that we got, that's where this harmonizing question came in because we kept asking, well, wait a minute. Because Ed's proposition, and I think yours, Rob's as well, is, well, doesn't GPOD trump all other bylaws? And we kept going back to that and asking that question over and over again. And she came back with the opinion is, the, and cited court cases that the goal, by the land use board that said bylaws should be harmonized to the greatest extent possible to provide the protections for the land that the zoning stipulates. So that it becomes, it becomes very subjective as to, okay, are you protecting the groundwater in the GPOD? Are you promoting development allowed by two or three other bylaws? Like the senior housing bylaw or other bylaws? So when you get these layers, her response was that we should be looking to make sure that we maintain the integ, the basic integrity of those bylaws, but harmonize them so that they are not in conflict and excluding permitted uses. That's the way I-
Well, I don't see the word harmonize in her answer.
Well, and permitted uses is, you know, permitted use-
I said, I don't see the verb harmonize in this. I'm, I'm, I'm reading this memorandum. That's-
Yeah, well, there are, there are several-
Do you have Claudia?
Which memorandum?
Yeah.
This was November 2010.
Okay. She's, Donna has, I mean, she has written, she has several times. She's, May 2012.
I have, I have all of her memorandum.
And also April 2012.
Okay, I have all of her memorandum.
There, there are a couple of topics that are in that letter. And one of the ones that I know you guys have wrestled with is your underlying zoning. And if you reread, when you ask, what can you do in the GPOD? What can the landowner do? All of the uses that are permitted in the town. It says permitted uses and that's something we went through in that discussion. All uses that they could normally do as a normal homeowner, they can still do. Unless, there are a few that are prohibited, a few terrible ones that you didn't want. You put those in there also. But what Donna is referring to and what comes up when you're dealing with the yield analysis. The underlying zoning applies. That's where you start. But you also have to understand, if you're in the groundwater protection overlay and you were going to subdivide, you have to go by those standards because those, those are, you know, those are critical if you're subdividing. So now you have to go with the 80,000 square feet. Even if you might have had something for 40,000 square feet, you now have to look at it if you're subdividing on the 80,000.
With a conventional subdivision plan.
With a conventional subdivision plan.
All right.
If you're not doing something conventional-
You use a special permit.
It's a special permit. Different rules apply. You know, you're adding an overlay, which you're allowed to do. Any lot that's in a GPOD anywhere in town can apply any one of those special permit overlays that you've created.
You can overlay an overlay.
Senior housing, your OSFPD.
Ed?
Okay. That helps a lot.
May I read from her opinion? Because this addresses specifically her-
Which opinion?
Which date?
It's the document that was provided to all of us. It's dated May 2nd, 2012. Zoning in multiple overlay districts. And if I may, Ed?
Go ahead.
Facts. Hamilton has adopted several zoning districts comprising traditional Euclidean zoning districts. Conditional uses apply to some or all of the underlying districts and areas defined as overlay districts. The planning board has requested guidance on how to interpret the zoning bylaw when various districts and overlay districts apply to the same parcel- when various districts and overlay districts apply to the same parcel, perhaps in conflicting ways. So, question presented. How does the planning board reconcile various zoning requirements that appear to conflict when applied to a single parcel? What happens when the underlying zoning itself is an overlay district? Such that there may be three sets of zoning, i.e. groundwater protection district and a senior housing special permit overlay district? Is there any case that demonstrates this situation? Is there an order of application overlays when multiple overlays apply? So, conclusions. All sections of the zoning bylaw should be read so as to be in harmony with one another to the extent possible. Whether called an overlay district or not, all sections of zoning bylaw that regulate a single parcel carry the weight assigned to them by the zoning bylaw. If a section of the bylaw does not expressly exempt an application from its requirement, but instead adds layers of regulation, all layers are to be applied in assessing the proposed project for compliance. So, I can keep going, but-
It gets confusing there because you're talking about all the layers have to be applied.
Applying a bunch of special conditions in the special permit.
Can I, can I give you an example, Ed?
Let me, you will, but let me inject this question so that you can answer it if you can without going along. In the senior housing bylaws, it says in section 12 that GPOD has to be, what's the word?
Can you pull section 12?
Has to be adhered.
Special sensitivities. Actually, what section 12 is-
Right.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
I'll, I'll read it. General compliance proposal must comply with all other applicable town bylaws and the applicable rules, regulations, and requirements of all departments, boards, and commissions, including the special sensitivities of the historic district and the GPOD.
Right, so it's-
What's the terminology? It has to what comply with?
Must comply with all other, all other applicable town bylaws.
Right, so basically it's saying you must obey all other applicable bylaws. Whether it's Title V.
Right.
It's the Conservation Commission restrictions.
Or whatever, yeah.
It just says basically you've got to be in compliance with other, all other bylaws. Well, duh.
That's where I don't understand where you're coming from.
But that's exactly what Donna's saying. But the GPOD talks about a lot size. And there's one lot in a large property. It's not multiple lots.
Right.
You have cluster divided.
We're not even at that, we're not even at that.
But that's where the cookie meets the road. What Donna was saying is what essentially what this says.
Yeah, it's just basically saying you must harmonize all other bylaws. Right.
Okay.
When there is conflict, but there isn't any conflict.
Yes, there is.
No, there's no conflict once-
There's a conflict there.
There's no conflict because the, the, the GPOD is predominant.
No, that's not true.
No, that's not, that's not, that's not what is being said.
How do you resolve the overlays then? How do you harmonize? Be clear to me, how do you harmonize?
I'd be happy to.
What's the point of the overlay?
Can I, can I, can I-
What's the point of the overlay?
Can I, can I just try? There, there-
I know you want to.
There, there, I think Ed's right. There is no conflict. One does not take precedence over the other if it, an use is not specifically excluded. So let's say we said, I want senior housing and I want them to be able to store hazardous materials. You'd say, sorry, GPOD trumps you. You can't do that. So, as long as the uses in each of the overlays doesn't exclude the other, then they're inclusive. So unless one of them says something that you can't do and you're trying to do it, then, you know, you're out.
But the, okay, I'm, I'm listening. I'm trying to, trying to get my hands around this. So the GPOD says we want to protect the water supply.
Right.
And it isn't just septic entitled. It's not that. It's impervious surfaces, you know, whatever. So we want to protect the water supply. So we want to restrict that kind of impervious surface or whatever.
Yep, right.
Now, you have a senior housing and they say, but we, we'll give you density bonuses. So you can have, instead of 10 units, you can have 20 units or whatever the density works out to be.
Right.
Why is that not in conflict with the restriction to protect the water?
Got it, got it. So, you go back to the GPOD and look at it and read it and see what it specifically says to you and to the public that things that you cannot do within there. And there's a specific list and I'd be happy to read it to you, but it's right there. It says, you know, you can't have hazardous waste. You can't have trucking. You can't have sewage, you know, you can't have a sewage disposal plant as in a wastewater treatment plant. You can't be storing pesticides, gasoline stations.
And just going to your impervious, it specifies you can't have more than 15% or 200 square feet, whichever is greater.
Right, so as long as you're not doing those things, you're not, there's no conflict.
Then why did it tell us 80,000 square feet?
It says for a unit.
A lot.
A, the minimum, minimum lot size.
It's a lot size.
It's a dimensional requirement, not a use. That's your dimensional requirement for a lot size.
And if you've only got one lot, that's whatever number of acres.
Well, there's a hidden assumption when they chose the lot size. The hidden assumption that that's the deal. Was that there was a, it was a residential use of the septic and it wasn't a water treatment plant. There wasn't any advanced technology. It was, and so there, there had to be no more than one septic system. But they used the word lot, which was the silliest thing. They should have talked about what the treatment plant was if they wanted to be very technical. But they, they, that's why the guy on Asbury Street made two acre lots. So there wouldn't be too many septic systems too close together.
He had to.
To make it buildable. Yeah.
Right, so that's why I'm saying, I'm, I'm still, you know, looking for that. What am I looking for? The-
Conflict.
The, something that's going to jump up and, and say, you know, there's a conflict. I haven't heard that yet, so that's why I'm trying to focus this discussion.
Well, I'm looking at it.
So that I won't make the mistake that I made before and, and bring it as a comment from the audience. Keep it on topic, okay?
Yes, well, if I could just explain the conflict that I see, that-
Could you say who you are?
Timothy Majowski, Sharon Road. The GPOD states that there should be one dwelling unit per 80,000 square feet.
No, it doesn't say.
It doesn't.
You better read it.
It does not say that.
It does not say dwelling unit.
The purpose of it is to restrict use by so many people in order to protect our groundwater.
You're interpreting it that way, but that's not what it says.
It, it is what it says. I've gone over it many times.
Show it, find the language.
So that's the conflict right there. One lot of 11 acres is not going to support, under GPOD, 20 condominium units. Or the patent property is not going to support 12 housing units on three acres if that also is in the GPOD.
You're just dead wrong.
Well, then, the wonderful thing about this is, is that no matter what it takes for me, I will-
Good, do it.
I will test the law in court.
Good.
And I want you all to know that.
Bring it on.
Whatever it takes.
Good, excellent.
You've told us that before.
Yeah, I mean, this is-
Hey, let's keep this civil.
Rick, I find that uncivilized and I'm going to rule you, I'm going to rule you out or if you don't change your attitude. This is, this is a resident of the town of Hamilton.
I understand. This is the same thing-
Well, then, understand being civil to the residents of the town of Hamilton who we represent.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'd like to write, read you my conclusion on this topic. It's very short, it's a couple of paragraphs. It says, GPOD does not supersede all other bylaws. GPOD requires a minimum lot size of 80,000 square feet for any building lot in the GPOD. In a senior housing overlay district, there is only one building lot with a cluster of buildings that use a single wastewater treatment plant. Thus, like limiting lot size to one lot every 80,000 square feet in the GPOD, the senior housing overlay district special permit will limit the project's septic system to a single wastewater system discharge with water quality that is far greater and exceeds the discharge quality of a septic system. I can go on with the other things.
What's this from? I'm sorry, what was this source?
Me.
Oh, it's some of your-
That's how I harmonize the conflict that you apparently see between these different things. But I believe that the whole purpose of GPOD is simply to deal with a minimum lot size with a hidden assumption of a septic technology. And that's why we hire an engineer to come in and review it with the public health department. And you get the thing so that you know the water that's going out of that is far better than the water that would ever go out of a septic system. Or seven septic systems on 14 acres if it's Canterbury.
Mr. Hubbard, you have your hand up.
I, it seems to me it's, it's a disagreement over what is the intent of defining an 80,000 square foot lot? What was the intent of using that as a definition for the groundwater protection?
At the time, they had no special permits at all in this town. There was only conventional subdivisions.
But whether the intent was there'd be one house with one septic system and two cars and four people, which meant there wasn't an irrigation system, whatever the case is, that's how they defined and were able to determine a way to protect this groundwater protection area was an 80,000 square foot house because, right. They assumed every one septic-
But now we've adopted five other bylaws now with all of those special permits.
But then you need to change the bylaw of the groundwater protection act because you're, you're changing the game for the people who are coming in wanting to know what they can do with their property against groundwater.
No, we're not, no, we're not.
Well, you're telling one person they need 80,000 square foot lots, but you're telling another person they don't need that.
Well, because we adopted a cluster bylaw. Because we adopted an estate bylaw. Because we adopted a senior housing bylaw.
It gets to, the crux of the problem is-
We also adopted a C O D for the-
What is the define, why is there an 80? I live on Milesboro Road. It's an 80,000 square foot minimum.
In a residential district.
What was the intent?
Well, here's the thing.
You can go, of course you don't want me to, you don't want me to park toxic trucks there. So of course that's written in there. I mean, there are a lot of things you don't want me to do in addition to building another house. But the, the ground rule here is you want me to build one house with one septic. That's the intent of this groundwater protection law.
No, but that's where you limit yourself.
Can I, can I kind of-
I didn't limit myself. We wrote the law to protect the groundwater.
Jeff, understood. But that's, you're building under a subdivision, single family zoning bylaw. That's what he said, that was all there was in this town. Since then, there are four new bylaws that have been implemented. Okay, so a, so a person, a landowner, a developer can now say, oh, well, I want to use that bylaw to do estate housing. Or I want to use that to do cluster housing. Or I want to do to senior housing. So if you want to build a single family house in the GPOD, it's got to be on an 80,000 square foot lot. If you want to do something else on that, you now go to a different bylaw.
Rick, I understand that, but the definition, I think what the intent here was to define a way to tell people to protect our groundwater. Right? They were trying to use words to figure out how to tell people, we don't want to mess with our groundwater, so here's one way. We don't want any more houses than one per 80,000 square feet. Because we know that means there'll only be one septic system, one house, one family with their dogs and their horses and their irrigation system. So that's how they defined it. They added on things, yeah, no toxic stuff, no this, no that.
Hey Jeff, how did the school get the right to put in a great big water treatment plant right next to my residential house?
Can't answer that.
Yes, you can. Because it's in the bylaws of the town that they can put a wastewater treatment plant. And it has very strict requirements. And they have to get it permitted under the Title V.
Then make the ground rules clear to people that want to come in and buy a piece of property in the groundwater protection area. Make it clearer for them so that they know that they're-
We have, we have.
That sounds like a recognition.
Pretty unclear to me. We've spent a lot of time spinning our wheels on properties that are unclear.
So what's not clear to you?
Let Claudia speak, please.
I just wanted to follow on, 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 on your comment, Mr.-
Majowski.
I'll never get that. The dimensional requirements, and it says regardless of the minimum lot size of the underlying zone, there should be a minimum of 80,000 square feet for the building lot in the GPOD. And then when it, when you reference the computation, again, some of this problem is the verbiage in this thing. But it says for each dwelling unit, there shall be a lot area in the GPOD of the size set forth in section B and D above. So the problem with that is a dwelling unit. Is that, what is a dwelling unit? Is that a, what is a dwelling unit? Is that a house? Is that one house? I don't know what that means.
Under different bylaws, it means different things.
It does mean different things in the bylaw and we've been through that. And when we went through this exercise a year ago, we started with a basic explanation of how you construct a bylaw. And I think that's what confuses a lot of people in the public. The purpose is what's in your mind, your, your general vision for your town. Every bylaw, you have a dimensional requirement for many of these. And that's your lot shape. And you know, the underlying zoning says 20,000 square feet, 40,000 square feet, or 80,000 square feet in this town. Those are your three basic dimensional requirements. That's your lot shape. If you have that lot shape, you are in business. You can do business. If you don't, it sends you to the ZBA. Okay, that's usually what triggers a zoning board review. If you have your correct dimension, you may then talk about uses on that lot. If you have more than you need for acreage, which as in some of these cases we've talked about, a 14 acre or 20 acre parcel, you can apply uses. But to mix talking about uses and lot shapes, you're getting all confused. Nowhere in this bylaw, in the zoning, will you see the word septic. Septic is managed by your state board of health regs and your board of health department. They permit things that work according to the state laws and their testing. Septic, and there's no reference to the word septic in this bylaw, nor should they be. That is a completely different piece. It's not lot shape and it's not use. That's their piece of it and it is held separate. And I think unfortunately, it's all been intertwined and confused. You can have, you know, this is, we've been talking about a parcel that's larger than 80,000 square feet, but you could have somebody come in with a two acre parcel and ask if they could apply a senior housing bylaw, maybe for four units. It's a cluster. They can ask for that overlay. And if they can prove that they can do the septic properly, that it won't impact your community groundwater, this board could approve them.
But excepting even removing the septic issue again. Because I think you're right, when you read all of the stuff and we were comparing for this, it's not about the septic. It's this impervious water, the water, the surface thing. So what I, so what I do think to his point, it is confused. There is a confusion here.
There's been some confusion.
Dwelling unit, there's no glossary.
Well, we, I did give you the, you know, you have dwelling units. Sometimes in the senior housing, you reference bedrooms and units. And you've, you've muddied it a little bit.
When we looked at the apartment, the accessory apartment.
But I, you know, I, I can't stress enough the difference between lot shape and use. And, and they are a little bit different.
That's awful.
But to add to things, Ed, one thing that this board, you've looked at your map a couple of times. and we're physically out of maps at town hall, and so I need to reprint them as your staff.
We have a new one, right?
Well, you reprinted it a few years ago, but the difficulty in reprinting it, the groundwater protection overlay and the things that are covered on the map, you have capped and closed the patent well. So the interim wellhead district and the wellhead protection that goes along with that.
You say that it's been capped and closed, and the town manager says it has been.
As, I have a letter from the state.
But I haven't seen it from DEP that it's capped and closed.
The state has closed it, it will, it will never be opened again for drinking water. And so it now does not need to be protected by the GPOD with that level of stature. While I was discussing with this with your board of health staff, she also informed me that as a general practice, another well, the Bridge Street well, that's not been operational for years, and she does not utilize that interim wellhead protection in her Title V reviews, so that too could come off your map. So if I go to reprint.
What's your, what's your, what's your point?
I need to ask your board's approval to begin the process of removing both of those from this map, which affects people's lands, it affects, it might affect property.
But it doesn't affect the GPOD.
Yes, it will.
Yes, it will.
It will shrink the, it may, it may move it back.
Did you find the alien Aldridge study, that you were trying to go back to the original wellhead protection study?
I'm working on some of that.
Christine, I just, I talked to them about this, and I said, with that well closing, will it change? She said, there's a new map out.
There's no new map yet, we have to produce.
This was three days ago, she said there is a new map, and she said it did not change the GPOD closing that well. So I'm just, they know more than we do.
Nobody's produced a new map yet.
She says it's here, so.
I'm, Claudia, who's she?
The department, I'll talk to you later.
Well.
No, Robert said, who are we talking about? Who's she?
Department of Water, whatever her name is.
Leslie and Public Board of Health?
No, the state.
DEP? So DEP has a map?
Has changed.
No, they said we have it, they said there isn't one. And the, the GPOD did not change.
Why would it not change?
Well, they closed, even, I said, with the well closing, will the GPOD, that area, will it change? The geography change? She said no.
And it may not, it's a very wet area of town, and that, that may be the case. But the DEP has not, as far as I know, on Friday, I haven't been in, since I'm on vacation this week. But.
Because this is, this is based on not wells, this is based not on wells, but on the Ipswich River watershed recharge area, and they're not related.
But there are two sections in your town, they are.
That's not true.
Your interim wellhead is part of the groundwater protection area.
So where are we going?
Well, we have a, I'll get to you in just a minute. We have a responsibility, I feel, as a board, to landowners, developers, and so forth that come to this town, we have a responsibility to clarify somehow, and it looks like it might be in the courtroom, because I'm not giving way on my feelings on it, and you're not giving way on your feelings on it, and so anyhow, yes, sir.
I just wanted to make two additional brief comments. The wellhead protection, I believe, is an area of no development whatsoever. I don't think when you close a wellhead, that's going to affect the GPOD. That's the first comment that I'd like to make. The second comment is that when the GPOD was developed, I received a letter, we had asked the advice of some of the people that worked on that bylaw, to send us some information what went into the thinking and the planning behind the GPOD. I think his name was David Thompson, I can't be absolutely sure. I have a copy of that opinion of him, from him, that I would like to submit to the planning board as part of the record in this meeting, because I think when you have legislative intent, that we have in a situation such as this from Mr. Thompson, who worked on this zoning, bit of zoning, I think it's very important when you're determining the future of the town and what was anticipated at the time this was put in place, and what the town is anticipating doing to it in the future. And I think to look at its purpose and its original idea and what its definition was about would be helpful to the planning board, and I would be truly happy to submit it.
I think we have a copy of it, but in the interest of the general welfare of the town, you could submit it again, and Christine will make sure that it gets distributed to the board.
Thank you.
I think we have one.
I'll just make sure.
Dave was here.
Dave was here?
David Thompson did appear before this board twice to my knowledge in the past year or so with.
No, it was, the, three years ago when we did the original.
Three years, oh, time flies, doesn't it?
When you're having fun.
And I mean, we've winded this to death, I guess, for tonight. Is there any, I'm going to cut things off on this subject, but, but.
I just wanted to answer, Rick, the reason for the discussion is that I think we as a board should at least come to some agreement, because it isn't fair to applicants.
Oh, absolutely.
And I think rather than to backstab and scream and yell, I think if we were to figure out a way to be united and clear, because I think one of the problems with it is there are some issues of clarity in this document. And so it's important for us to be clear, that is the reason we had this discussion. When you said, where are we going, that's where we're trying to go.
So I'm just wondering, wrapping this up, where do we go? Because it doesn't sound like everybody's come to a conclusion. So what, how do we build on the discussion tonight to get to that point?
I think, well, for my own part, I thought this was very helpful. I think that I, I really would like to say that I'm seeing it much more clearly than I did with, although I loved your exercise.
It takes multiple times to understand.
Black, whatever, Van Gis, whatever that thing was, I loved it, but this was clearer tonight, so.
Got two, two comments from the audience, and then I'm going to close this subject down for the night.
Could the board members talk first?
I'm sorry.
Could other board members talk?
Yeah. Want to talk after the audience or before the audience?
I might do it before.
Okay, go for it.
My idea was that maybe it wouldn't hurt to redo, because Jeff wasn't on the board at the time, the Black Rock exercise, so that we understand the nomenclature. Because three members of the board still don't understand the terms, at least the way I think I understand them. And I'd like to not have a difference of opinion among the board as to what each of the terms are and how they're applied in that exercise. I think that exercise revealed a great deal, and we took a vote afterwards, and we sort of had a consensus, but we didn't have unanimity, and I like Claudia's idea. Let's build on trying to explain to each other through another exercise.
I'm almost in agreement with you, but I think it's a healthy process to have three of the members look at it differently. That's what the democratic process.
No, I don't think so, that's a confusion. If the terms are clear, and you get, because I think you're misapplying some of the terms, and that's why.
And it's apparent that it's not clear, so anything we do to clarify it is an advancement.
That's why I'm saying maybe do it again, or maybe a slight variation on it.
In the interest of clarification, I've got two comments in the audience, then I'll go on to other things.
Yep.
Maybe Jeff, who wasn't here, would be interested in this. So a couple hundred towns adopted something similar to GPOD. Regrettably, they used a variety of names for the bylaws. Some are groundwater protection, some are watershed protection, and a whole bunch of other names. They all essentially, they were part of a program, and DEP and DEM got on board with training seminars and so forth to help towns get the, their bylaws approved.
DEM as well, I'm sorry.
And it didn't have to do just with septic, it has to do with pet waste and septic and petroleum drippings, and God knows what else comes with high density residential use. They were designed to limit a lot of uses, but particularly high density residential use. So maybe, Mr. Chairman, if it would be helpful, I could send Christine a brief note with some history of the movement to enact bylaws like that in Massachusetts. In the, went from about the early 80s till about the early 90s. And that would probably, and there's quite a few cases construing the various bylaws. Regrettably, because the names of the bylaws are different, the keywords are frequently different.
Actually, I'd be happy to give the board this directory, Developing a Local Wellhead Protection Plan, put together by the Department of Environmental Protection, Bureau of Resource Protection, Drinking Water Program, Commonwealth of Massachusetts, 2001, which actually lays out a whole process and education and developing bylaw to do just.
No, separate program, Rick. That's wellhead protection, which is quite different from GPOD.
No, actually, this is.
I personally would like to take your offer up, John. I personally, I don't have the background, you guys, in happiness. I haven't attended all the hearings, I haven't gone through the exercise, which I think would be helpful. I know that this is, I've read this, I'm not a municipal lawyer, but I've read it, and I'm a little bit confused by it, although I understand what Christine has said, and I understand what others have said and so forth. But this is obviously going to be a big issue coming up in the relatively near future for a lot, not just one, but a lot of residents in town who are adjacent to a particular project. And I would welcome any, any input that I could get, so that if I ultimately make a vote on this thing, I think I'm doing it.
Is the rest of the board in agreement that it's all right for?
So it's proper for me to send it to Christine, not to you?
To Christine, and she'll distribute it, distribute it, and we had a question, and a comment from you, ma'am.
It was very quick, I.
Could you, could you stand up and say your name, please?
Kami Beckman, Highland Street. And, no, my, my comment really is just thank you for addressing this, because last meeting, this is really what I asked, was let's, like, duke it out and get settled. And hopefully not really like with this, but because as a butter of one of these projects, which you all know, Canterbury, I'd just really like to see something happen that takes it from what is a despicable eyesore, that's god awful to live next to, to anything that could be an improvement, that could be.
How about Cumberland Farms, we got one.
Getting gas needed, the groundwater.
There is this EKLD case, we need them to turn down the gas at convenience store. Thank you very much, that was a very pleasant comment, and it kind of reinforces the idea that it's all right for us to be out on a snowy night, and.
Ed, can I, one, one, I'll ask this question again. You know, we've built a process now, we've got some momentum. Everybody's right, we need to wrestle this to the ground, because this is the one thing that we know is a potential deal killer if this board can't come to some conclusion. So as somebody said, let's not go through this whole process and waste a lot of our time and the developers' time only to find at some point in the process that we can't agree and it's dead, so.
Didn't I just say that?
What action step? So what action step are we going?
Oh, do that again, I love when you crawl.
What have we agreed to do? Put it on the agenda for the next meeting?
Well, that's my question.
Well, Peter, Peter made a suggestion, and I don't exactly know what he's referring to, but it was a certain exercise that the board went through a while ago. Does it make sense to go through that again or not? I think it clarified a lot of terms, and I don't know if we do the exact one or do a slight variation of it.
It was a very healthy exercise, it's just, we had a lawyer on board at that time, Joe Orlando, who suggested that he learned about black acres in law school. You take an imaginary lot, thus referring to it as a black, and shoving it around amongst the town bylaws and seeing what you can do with it. So I would, I would be all in favor of doing that. I don't know that we need to, do we need to put anything to a vote, or we just?
No, we just put it on the agenda.
People put it on the agenda.
People put it on the agenda, but I will remind you that you have a public hearing opening up for Canterbury on the 18th, on the 4th.
On the what date?
It's advertised for March 4th.
March 4th.
March 4th.
You have, you also have, the Patent Pool Project will be here for the beginning of their stormwater management permit process and site plan review.
It'll be busy.
You have a couple of projects, and Cumberland Farms is coming in in March as well with the downtown development, so you have three projects. I mean, we can do the exercise, but it can't take an hour.
What I suggest, yeah, we can do it in 10 minutes, if everyone does their homework, because you submitted the whole thing, and maybe what you should do is put a script to it, so that you can send that out to everyone within the next, you know, next week, and then they can read that one page script and understand what the principles were with very careful verbiage as to what the terms are. You know, lots, buildings, all the things that confuse people as to whether GPOD applies or not. And then if Jeff reads that and each of us does our homework, we can probably agree on a lot more than we do tonight.
I don't even think we need to spend a lot of time together on it, we can all do it individually. It's like a case study from Harvard Business School, and we come and we either understand it or we don't understand it.
Well, and it would be good if people come back, if they've got a specific issue they're really stuck on.
Right, but I don't think it needs to be hours of discussion.
No, no, understood, right.
I would appreciate it if we at least went through the exercise, so I had to get into your thoughts on it, rather than simply reading a piece of paper and knowing there are other viewpoints.
We'll get it on the agenda for next meeting.
We will, and I think tonight we heard a couple more frequently asked questions, so I will make sure I add those and then prepare some answers for you from tonight.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good night. How about an update from the Hamilton Development Corporation?
I think we have somebody in the audience.
Do we have Bill get it off his chest?
He's asleep, he was sleeping over there.
Oh, he's getting to the board.
Oh, we'll get papers here.
Could you tell us your name and address?
Jose Menas, 356 Jubacal Road.
Serial number?
5106673. Before I begin, number one, I'm not speaking for the school committee, as you know, I'm on the school committee. Number two, everything I say derogatorily to you people, I support you 1,000%, I'm behind you. Please remember that, I'm just upset. Three subjects, your planning director, your HDC, the pool, and what prompted this is the refusal of our town manager to give this person, a planning board member, his due rights as a citizen and his rights as a planning board member. It's been done to me because I am the gant fly in the town, and I understand that. But when a planning board member gets stonewalled and gets the Washington Two Step, as we call it, then there's something wrong. It is my personal opinion that this board is being mushroomed.
Mushroomed?
Mushroomed, does everybody understand what mushrooms means? You don't? Oh, that's when they put you in a little dark room and every now and then they throw a little shit on you.
Okay.
Okay? That's when you have somebody that you just want to put away, and you just want to have them as, in name as only. When a person, a town manager turns around and says to, it's a new board, that it's cronyism, well, would you please explain to me why a site plan review goes to a bunch of other coronies that are appointed and not the people who are elected for review, such as what's coming up with the Patent Pool? You know, I'll know I'm against this large pool, I am for a small pool. Can you explain to me why, when you have a planning function, as far as I know, I'm not a lawyer and I don't read the state laws and I don't know, please, if I make a mistake here, don't beat me up on it, but as far as I know, you know, you have the responsibility to do almost all the planning associated with the three types of planning that are in there. You also have, okay, and I'm just taking a sentence out of it. Outside the master plan on official map, the planning board from time to time may conduct studies and prepare plans regarding the town's needs. You're not doing that. Why are you not doing that? Because you're not being included. And I, I don't know how to say it to you guys, but you know, the planning director, or whatever you want to call, whether you need him or not, that's up to you, okay? That's not my pay grade. But what isn't my pay grade is that if you're going to be a planning function, then that man, or a woman, as that case may be, and whatever the job description is, should work for you, not the town manager. That's one. Two, we have HDC, I like it, it's a good, it's a good organization. Every now and then I like Rick, but you know, but it's a good organization. But if you read their charter, they're doing your job. So why isn't the HDC a proper subset of the planning board? Why aren't they maybe on equal, but why don't they essentially be a function of the planning of the town? Because that's what you do, okay? You just happen to start out thinking you're doing it downtown, but if you read the charter, it's the whole town. And I'm saying to myself again, why is this happening? Why are you people being mushroomed? Now, if you're going to turn out to be a permitting organization, then I suggest you change your name. And I know what it is to deal with nine peoples, like pushing a rope, and you're seven, so it's hard to get everybody on the same page. But I don't understand why you don't stand up. But I don't understand why you don't stand up, and I'm a fighter, you know that, and I'm a voicestress, loud, obnoxious, whatever you wanna call me, that's what I am, but the squeaky wheel sometimes gets the oil. And I'm not a hundred percent right all the time, but I'm not a hundred percent wrong all the time. So I guess, if, 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 if you guys don't develop a set of whatevers, okay, then you're gonna be mushroomed, and I, I don't like that. I think you, I think the, the board has got a lot of potential, I'm listening to this argument tonight, that you're talking about this overlay, you know, obviously, it's good, I like it, I think it's, you know, because it is, it's, it's poor wording of laws, and you guys get all confused, and that people wanna do things, have a hard time getting them done, so maybe that's a good idea. But I think, as far as the planning, the HDC, as far as just now the pool, now, you know, this is originally where I came to, about a month ago, and complained that, I'm not saying there are, uh, the Blue Ribbon Committee, as far as I know, and I'm not reporting for them, I'm just sort of saying what I hear, because I attend all their meetings, is concerned about a lot, a lot of different things that are not well-defined, well-laid out, not thought through, so forth and so on, this pool. A lot of them have to do with the function that you will be addressing, okay? The parking, the legal, the crossing, so forth, so on, and I'm not gonna go into the detail, that's for something later, but this planning of, I call PQ, Patent, Pieri, and Pool, three projects, should have been almost initiated out of this organization, and supported by the other organizations. So I, I'm just sort of screaming at you, and saying that you're remiss in your duties, and not standing up, and taking control of the whole thing, and you should be. And I, I mean, it's not that I, I might disagree with Peter, and I might disagree with him, but ain't the point here. Oh, don't think I'd never disagree with you? Oh, that's a first, I've never heard that. Right? I, I just, and I'm angry, and I'm angry, when I read, I read what happened with Rob, with, with this, with the town manager, he is pushing the pool agenda through on his own thing, and has refused, he's refused me, and in the article that you read, it was me that he threatened to have arrested if I set fool on the foot on the pool property. Now, I don't know what you can do, I don't know what the laws are in Massachusetts, I don't know whether you go to the IG, the AG, the, the local bishop, I don't know what you do to, to do this sort of thing, but I, I wouldn't be asking them, I'd be telling them, you're an independent, as far as I know, according to the law, you don't report to anybody, except for the people. I, I represent one person, okay? So you report to me. I think that it, that it is, it is a crying shame, what's going on in this town, and I can say it, cause I'm an individual, you have to be guarded, because you're a board. I think it's a crying shame, the way this town is being led, and where we're going, and the, like I said before, and I'm not gonna repeat myself, cronyism, are you kidding me? This is, this is crazy. I, I just got all upset, when I, when I read that letter, and, and what, what Michael did, he's done it to me, he's done it to other people, and he's trying to do it to the, the Blue Ribbon Committee. Enough of that. I would think that you would take the actions, I, I don't know how to change the, the HDC, I don't know how to, but I do know that you can do something about this planning person. This planning person is a, is a function of what you have the charter from the state of Massachusetts to do, and you should be doing it, period. I said enough, I dropped the bomb, thank you very much, my time.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Ed. Very eloquent.
Thank you for your opinion. Now we get to the Hamilton Development Corporation update.
Okay, um, I presented...
Just for the, for the record, Brian is chairman of the HDC.
President.
President of the HDC. And Rick Mitchell is another member, is a, is a member, are you on office or anything?
I'm the board director. I presented a couple weeks ago to the board of selectmen, I don't know if you can state for that whole thing or not, Ed, but, um, basically what I'm gonna tell you tonight, just going over some of the big highlights that we've done from 2013, what we, you know, plan on doing this year as well. Um, you know, first thing we obviously did, we, you know, kind of got ourselves together, got our organization together, all the administrative, financial, everything we needed to, you know, form the HDC, and get it up and running. We, next thing we did, along with, you know, Christine and the planning board of Hamilton and Wyndham, was we received a grant from the MAPC for the $25,000, and, and we talked about this before, for the downtown visioning study. With that, we conducted four public workshops, and got input from the various stakeholders, the residents downtown, the residents throughout Hamilton, the business owners, and, you know, and merchants as well, to help, you know, kind of see what their vision was for, for downtown. And I, and like I said, Wyndham was included in that as well, and their businesses. And then, towards the end of last year, we issued an RFP for, to develop a wastewater public education forum, if you will, on potential options, cost benefits, et cetera, for developing wastewater treatment, uh, infrastructure for downtown. Again, you know, Wyndham will be involved in this, they're directly adjacent, definitely part of, um, and that, you know, getting into 2014, we'll be actually meeting with the gentleman tomorrow, our first real meeting with him, to go through the plan, go through all the action items that he has to do, and that we'll be working on with him, and hopefully, we'll probably set a date tomorrow morning, but, um, you know, for the public hearing that he will run, that will, you know, incorporate everything.
Yeah, just not, not a public hearing.
I'm sorry.
Public information.
Right. Yeah, a public forum, if you will, kinda like we have with the MAPC. That, and, you know, basically what he's gonna do is, you know, just somewhat dispel fears of a potential wastewater treatment facility, you know, what are the benefits of it, what are the negatives of it, what are the potential costs, depending, at some point, potentially, you know, depending on...
When is that gonna take place?
We don't know the date yet, we're gonna talk to him tomorrow, it's our first meeting with him tomorrow, so we'll probably know after that, when the date will be, and that will be disseminated to all the town land use boards, all the residents in town, Wyndham, their, their boards, and so forth, so that'll be forthcoming fairly soon.
But I'd like to attend, because I was so heavily involved in putting the sewer system in essence.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I'd like you all to...
We want all relevant land use boards, their representatives to attend. And, you know, it, again, we're, we'll talk about what areas in town we're thinking about, or what areas downtown we're thinking about, whether it's, you know, is it just the business district, does it, does it expand out into residential areas downtown, you know, Union, all those are streets over there, and so forth. So that's our next, one of our next big things. And then recently, I think as you all know, we received the report from the MAPC on the downtown planning workshops.
Have you guys looked at it online?
Yeah.
Yes, it's online on the town website, is it, is it up and running now?
It's up and running, it's attached, it's technologically attached with, you know, on the planning board page.
Right.
So, if you need a printout, I'll be ordering some, in color, because it's a lot of coloring, please don't do it on your home printers.
Is it?
You'll run out of ink.
So, you know, with, with this, just, I don't know how many of you have looked at it, um, we talked about it at our last HDC meeting for the first time, um, you know, there's some, there's some really good information in here, there's some excellent suggestions, there's also some pieces that, especially visuals, that, you know, aren't what we want in town, but it's what they presented at the, here, here at the meetings, and just to get a reaction. So there's images of, of buildings on potential properties in town, it's not necessarily what we want, and I, I know there was a comment from a couple people recently, that, you know, you need to, we, the HDC and others, need to say, okay, this isn't exactly our vision, it was a tool used by the MAPC to generate a reaction from, you know, the people at the meetings, and most of the people that are reading this. So that, that's just a preface on that. But there, there's a lot in here, some of which, you know, could happen at some point about, you know, bike paths, sidewalks, and some of this connectivity we talked a little bit about tonight, with the pool, and the rest of downtown, and crosswalks near the pool, or other, other spots in town, on, you know, near Linden Street was one of them, um, you know, getting the bike paths, you know, 1A potentially up Linden, you know, there's, there's a number of things in here that they recommend, that directly came out of the merchants and the residents downtown, I mean, that, that was kind of one of the, you know, bigger things from the study, that could happen, you know, fairly soon. The other one, or the other couple are...
Are you gonna have, are you gonna have a public process, as to what the town wants or doesn't want, or, cause you, you have that in the public hearing, but that's not very much of in, input, because an awful lot of the town didn't come.
Right, everyone was invited.
I know.
Right, and you're, you're right, we got thirty, forty people, depending on which meeting it was.
Number from Wyndham.
Yeah, some from Wyndham, exactly, but this is one step, there's gonna be, you know, if we go forward with, like Christine was saying earlier, you know, potential recommended zoning bylaw changes, or some version thereof, there'll be a, a full public process, right? So that's talked about in here.
Like changing sidewalks, or, you know, meridians, and things like that.
Right.
But are you, are you gonna bring the zoning changes to us, or are you gonna propose them and have a public hearing without us?
No, no, we, we can't do that, we can't do that. Um, I mean, you might know the process a little better, right, than you just gonna come directly to the planning board.
Well, I, I think, now, what I was explaining the other day to somebody else, I said, no, when you have a plan in print, it starts, it levels the conversation, everybody's on the first step, cause you have the same information before you, and it, it makes recommendations about crosswalks on Bay Road, it makes recommendations about whether or not your community wants to put that, a stencil, a bicycle stencil, to create that share the road image, are you gonna promote bicycle traffic in this town? That's a topic for the planning board. If the planning board says, okay, we're gonna talk about the plan tonight, and, and bicycle pathways, and we're gonna invite the people who are trail management people to the session, does Hamilton support this or not, the concept of promoting sharing the road, and it's just a stencil, but your board would have that discussion. This plan also, for, for me as your staff, enables me to work with the DPW director, and the police chief, on establishing a review of crosswalks, where you have identified them as a priority, and one of those that's of critical importance right now, is the Patent Pool Park area, because it's in the plan, and if your board has discussed it, it then gives you leverage to get that crosswalk in place that...